I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, two beautiful counsels united by a righteous steel for equal opportunity and justice for all in this hour of the year.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
And at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. This first public comment is for those items that show up on the agenda this evening. If you would come up and provide your name or write your name and phone and also say it so that we get it correct in the record. And limit your time to three minutes, if you could.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kathleen Mary Williams, and I reside at 1240 Morris Street, Cadillac.
Kathleen, Kathleen, could you please step in front of the microphone so people at home could hear you, please?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Usually they can hear me, but...
We can hear you in here, but not so much at home, I think.
I've been trying to figure out how to make my legs work like my mouth, but it hasn't worked.
Thank you.
I can relate.
Thank you. Mrs. Philkins, you have sat in the mayor's chair and made the statement at different times that you want to move ahead on positive things, and yet after all this, you place an article in Evening News about the past and give our past mayor Bill Barnett credit for spending $130,000 in lawyer fees. Now, in all honesty, shouldn't that really be credited to your side of the ledger, as it was your unethical campaign that is the root of the problem? I still not can figure how in the world it can be legal for you to give a disposition concerning Mr. Blackburn and then how you can go to a meeting and vote. But maybe there are things I don't know about. And so Mr. Blackburn's back on deck. Perhaps we should have our governor send in one of those people to run the city, as we seem to be running a three-ring circus, as Sherri Spohman stated. Is there something to hide? Why is it so important to make sure that Gordy Maxwell and Mr. Richardson not be able to see the minutes of the meetings they ask about? A closed meeting, as I understand, is so the council members can voice their opinions openly between one another. But we should know what has transpired from that. And then I don't understand in the article in the paper what the phrase "got you mouth." I couldn't figure that one out. Mrs. Philkins, you play a very good game of chess, as you find a loophole to remove your opponents before the game starts. Example, you remove Mr. Stevens from a committee that he has spent a lot of time and energy on, and then you schedule a meeting when you know Mr. Malama and Mr. Stevens cannot attend. The last I knew, our city code was pattern after Robert's Rules and Order, and this is never less than two-thirds a majority. So three people out of five does not make two-thirds majority. I think we are leaving out an important person from our equations here. I would like to see us have a 30-second prayer after our saluting both of the flags, and maybe this would entice all of us to consider the other person's side of these issues. Now, I'm not here because I don't like somebody, or I hate them, or anything else. I don't like their ideals, and if I'm going to talk over the back fence about what goes on here, then I should come down here and face you guys and let you know what I think. Anyways, to you, Sherri Spohman, I would like to say I am truly sorry for what one day you will have to experience with your animals, because before my husband died, we had three animals that lived to be 22 and 20 and 19. And of course, our children were out of the house by then. And a lot of people don't understand this, but it's like losing some of your family. And I know that down the road, you're probably going to be facing that, and I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Ed Tenhouten. I was your city attorney here for 30 years, and I guess because of that background and hopefully some insight and knowledge about the city of Cadillac and how it works, I was requested to come before you tonight and to speak about the Blackburn case. I feel that the council should do what's in the best interest of the city, as you should in every issue that comes up. Now, on the Blackburn matter, I got a few notes here. I want to make sure I don't forget anything that I wanted to say to you, but... The Blackburn case has got quite a history behind it. It happened in the election of 2011, when Mr. Barnett narrowly beat Carla Philkins. After that election was over, he filed a lawsuit as mayor of the city of Cadillac to remove Mr. Blackburn from the Civil Service Commission on the grounds that he had actively managed Carla Philkins' campaign. Both Carla and Mr. Blackburn deny that. He supported Carla, as he had the right to do. He probably voted for her, as he had the right to do. But they deny that he actively managed her campaign. The issue has never been decided. It's been through the Circuit Court in Cadillac. Judge Peterson ruled in favor of Mr. Blackburn's right to have a hearing. The city appealed it to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals ruled that Mr. Blackburn had the right to have a hearing. They took it, Mr. Blackburn, using the city of Cadillac's money, took it to the Supreme Court. They sent it back to the Circuit Court, the Court of Appeals, I mean. The Court of Appeals again ruled in favor of Mr. Blackburn. Every court that's ruled has ruled in favor of Mr. Blackburn, and now they've reached a point where he's entitled to have a hearing in the Circuit Court. Now, Mr. Blackburn is a highly respected businessman in the city of Cadillac, well thought of, and he was a member of the Civil Service Commission as a volunteer. And the members of the council know all this, but there are some people in the audience that perhaps don't. So I'm giving a short history of the matter. The Civil Service Commission screens applicants for the police and fire departments, and it's a volunteer position that Mr. Blackburn served and accepted and did the job that he was appointed to do with that commission. Now, we're right at the point now where we're facing the decision, what to do. What are you going to do? And I hope you do it tonight, and I hope you do what's in the best interest of the city. And the best interest of the city is to let this thing go. You can't win. The city cannot win. The city has spent $130,000 already on this case. Mr. Blackburn has agreed to waive his costs, which I don't know what that figures, but I know that it's tens of thousands of dollars if the matter doesn't go any further. If it goes further, he probably won't, and that'll be another huge amount. It'll be another huge amount for the city to prosecute this case. Mr. Homier here is not cheap. He's already charged the city $130,000. It's probably another $25,000, $50,000 minimum. There's going to be a three- or four-day trial. There's going to be witnesses, probably depositions. And if Mr. Blackburn wins that case, as he's won every issue and every case and every decision has been in his favor so far, the council could be, the city, could be stuck with another huge bill to pay Mr. Blackburn's legal fees. And this thing could end up costing $200,000, $200,000, $250,000, which to me is a height of ridiculousness. I just don't see it, and I hope that you don't either. In any event, I hope that you'll vote on it and put this thing to rest, because it has to be dealt with. We have other problems. This case was started by Mayor Barnett as mayor of the city of Cadillac. Now, obviously, Mr. Barnett is not the mayor of the city of Cadillac anymore. Who's going to be the plaintiff? It has to be changed for the hearing, for the trial, and it can't be Carla, she'd have a conflict of interest. You've got all kinds of problems. With me tonight is Dave Reiser, who is an expert on our city charter. He was on the commission, on the committee that wrote the city charter. I was there, of course, and it was passed, and he may have a few comments to make about the legalities and the problems that the city has in that respect. So in my opinion, my humble opinion, based on my experience and based upon what's transpired in this case up to date, the city, you're beating a dead horse. Let it go. You can't win. The best that could happen to the city, and Mr. Blackburn doesn't get back on the Civil Service Commission, whether or not he ever would anyway, I don't know. But that's the best that can happen. You cannot win. You're going to lose a lot more money, money that could be spent fixing streets. I drive by every morning on Laurel Street, voted the worst street in the city of Cadillac. I sure would like to get that fixed. I go over it every day, several times. There's other priorities that supersede this so far that it's unimaginable to me that the council could consider pursuing this matter any further. I hope you don't. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. As Ed said, I'm David Reiser. I reside at 1300 Sunset Lane, and I did serve as the chairman of the City Charter Revision Commission that wrote the current city charter that was presented to the public and adopted in 1976. I don't come here to discuss the merits of the decision to ask Mr. Blackburn to step aside from the Civil Service Commission. That decision should be best left to others that are more knowledgeable than I am. But I did read an article last week in the Cadillac paper regarding the history of the case and decisions that were made, and I was reading along, and suddenly I was astounded to read, quote, "Barnett contends that as the highest executive official of the city, he has a sole discretion on how to operate the city, including whether to remove civil service commissioners from office." I clearly hope that that was not the defensive position that the city took in this litigation. I was flabbergasted to read that. Having served on the two charter revision commissions I thought I knew a little bit about, but I never recall creating any high chief executive position. Article 2 of the charter states, "The municipal government provided for in this charter shall be a council manager from a government." That's not a strong mayor form, as Grand Rapids and Detroit and other municipalities have. It's a council management from a government. The next article, talking about the organization of government, the very first section says, "The city council is a legislative authority of the city," not the executive, "the legislative authority of the city. It shall be invested in a city council composed of five members, one of whom, one of whom shall be mayor. All members shall have equal authority." That's what the charter says. So I was astounded that the mayor said he headed chief executive. "The administrative officers of the city shall be the manager, clerk, treasurer, and successor." And then later on in the charter, it describes the city manager as the chief administrative officer. So if anybody is going to be considered a chief executive, it clearly is the city manager and not the city mayor. To further emphasize the fact that this charter revision committee wanted to de-emphasize the power of the mayor, we established term limits for the mayor of two years, where the other council members each have four. There was a reason for that, to remind the mayor, "You ain't the head boss. You're one of five, and any decision that should be made is a council decision." Section 312 of the charter says, "Removal of all non-executive offices, officers and members of boards and commissions appointed by the council shall serve at the pleasure of the council." So the dismissal of Mr. Blackburn from the Civil Service Commission, and I don't judge the merits of that, should have been made by the council. The mayor could have recommended it. Any one of you could have recommended. You all had equal power. So I would hope that if you continue this process, you change your position, because it doesn't hold water that he was a chief executive officer. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, if there is no one else, then we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. We actually have minutes from the regular meeting on August 18th, a special meeting held on August 18th, along with the council retreat meetings on August 22nd, and the meetings from the special meeting held on August 28th.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next portion of the agenda is communications.
Yes. Tonight, we have a request from Tracy Trotner for the display of a banner from October 6th to October 20th, 2014, for the National 4-H Week.
I'd like to ask to be recused from this if the council thinks I should be, since I work for MSU Extension and 4-H. And if you look at the application, the organization is MSU Extension. I don't know how you want to handle that, but I just, I need to put that out there.
I'll make a motion that we accept Councilmember Spohman's request to be recused on this item.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, so then we're going to need a motion to approve the display of the banner?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for National 4-H Week and to display a banner from October 6th to October 20th, 2014, as presented.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And with that, it moves us to the city manager's report, which is lengthy tonight.
Yes, thank you, mayor and members of the city council. The first item under the city manager's report is a request for approval of sale documents for the sale of a city water main to the township of Herring. As members of council may recall, back at the July 21st, 2014 council meeting, the city council did authorize the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents to facilitate the transfer ownership of a piece of water main to the township of Herring. At this time, the documents have gone back and forth between our legal counsel, our utility staff, and Herring Township's legal counsel. And before you this evening are the updated documents that we are asking your approval of tonight. There's actually an update that's left on the desk as well, a little packet that was paper-looked together with some red lines that were in there. It came out this last minute.
It's just that one portion?
Jeff, do you want to...
Yeah, all three of the documents have that same portion in it, and basically what happened was that the township of Herring, they thought they were buying the water main from the valve on the north side of Mitchell Street up to the plaza, and we were actually selling them from the connection point to our city water main, which is on the south side of Mitchell, all the way up. So that little revision in there, the red line portion, is just saying it's from the city water system north, not from the north side of Mitchell Street north. And they put that same change in all three documents. So just to clarify that, the three documents, basically, you know, we're selling that pipe to Herring for $38,000. We're going to take care of our disconnection on our end. They're going to take care of their connection and however they want it to end on their end. So we clarified that last Wednesday, too, that we each do our own work on the water main. That way, we both know it's done to our own specifications.
Okay, thank you. What's the effective date on this?
Actually, it's kind of a moving target, because they will have to hook up their water to the main, will have to shut off the main to the city system, and then disconnect ours, and then they'll actually connect, open there. So it's kind of a fluid thing to go with the construction, but I would assume, once we sign it, they'd have their regular council session in Herring, and they'd sign it, and we'd probably do it within 30 days of whenever the Herring signed their document on their end. So plus, we will have to get a contractor. We'll have to come back to council, have the approval for the contractor to do the work of disconnecting for us. So I'd assume within 30 days, 30 to 45 days after Herring signs, we would have something.
If you're talking about the effective date of the agreement, it will be the date that the last party executes the agreement. So I'm not sure, off the top of my head, when Herring's, the board's going to consider it, at its next meeting, whenever that is.
Yeah, I think they're the second Wednesday of the month, I think.
So the agreement itself will not be effective until all the parties have signed it.
And the reference on here of the closing date?
I think the closing date's tied to when the hookups are completed.
Closing date indicates, I mean, that's a date in the past.
That's a revision we didn't catch, obviously. So I thought the closing date was actually the date when they hooked up their system to the main. I thought that was going to be the closing date.
It says August 29th on here, not to, no later than August 29.
Councilmember Spohman? Which of the three...
I'm on the agreement to buy and sell water main, and it starts at the bottom of the first page, and it goes into the second, onto the second page.
Jeff, do you see that?
Yeah, I do. I'm just reading it right now.
I don't mean to trip you up on anything. I just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
No, that's good. You know, I would, if the council wanted, I'd, you know, if we want to, I don't know if we can do the closing day after their meeting and put it out there, like at the 20th of the month, so we know we caught their meeting and so they actually approve it. You know, obviously, they haven't approved it, so we can't have a closing before they approve it, so...
So could it be within 30 days of their next meeting that we could put as a closing date?
Yeah. You know, I think if you, yeah, 30 days of their next...
Then it'll be done.
Well, the way that this is worded is it's no later than, so that's what you said, a no-later-than date.
Right, so if we put the no-later date 30 days out, you said that it should be done in 30 days.
Well, there's a, I think there's a closing where they'll own the pipe, but we're still going to be connected to it, and we'll be disconnecting from there, too. I mean, so I think there's, the closing can be any time, you know, it's just they'll own the pipe at that point. Obviously, they'll want us unhooked, and they'll want to be hooked as quick as possible to that pipe.
Do we have to have language that says, "but no later than"? Is that legal?
It certainly keeps everybody on...
On target.
Yeah. I mean, part of this was, there were some delays that occurred because of different meeting schedules, but nonetheless, I mean, I would be comfortable, subject to Jeff's approval, Monday, November 3rd is a Monday. I would simply put Monday, November 3rd in there, because it allows one of two alternative courses. One is a closing earlier, if the parties agree to an earlier closing date, but no later than November 3rd, which will keep everybody on pace.
November or October?
November.
Okay.
That'll give you more than enough time. You can close early.
Right.
So it won't be an issue that way.
Okay.
I was just going to say the motion would be then to approve it as amended, but if you have a question?
I was just going to first thank them for doing the red line copies for us with the changes. And the second question is just going to be if we could approve all three of them in one motion, or if they had to be done separately.
No, you could approve them in one. The other documents go with the agreement, which is the bill of sale and then a quit claim deed, which is really transferring any interest or title you might have in that one.
This is exciting to have this done, and it's a nice situation for us as well. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement to buy and sell the water main, the one that was given to us tonight.
The amended documents?
The amended documents with the change in November 3rd, 2014, as the closing date.
Wouldn't it be a motion to sell, not buy and sell?
Well, it's a motion to approve the buy-sell agreement.
They're going to buy it, and we're selling it, so, yeah.
It's just the title.
That's okay. Which includes the bill of sale and the quit claim deed. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item this evening is a request for an off-premise signed by Zion Lutheran Church. This item has come before the city council, I believe, at least five years in a row. Zion Lutheran Church, located off of Pearl... Zion Lutheran Church, located off of Pearl Street and Cadillac, has requested permission of the placement of two off-premise sandwich board signs within the city. One sign will be located along the southwest corner of Business Route 131 and Pearl Street, with the other located at the northeast corner of Pearl Street and Sunnyside Drive. The signs are going to be out there on October 18th, excuse me, the 16th through the 18th. This is to assist them with the sale of goods for their project Christmas program. The city packet, the agenda packet, does include a number of exemptions that the church does meet, as well as conditions. There are two conditions, one being that they need to comply with the MDOT right-of-way laws, if applicable, and that the period of display be limited from October 16th, 2014, to October 18th, 2014. As mentioned, again, this craft show has become an annual event within the city, and this is, I want to say, I think, the fifth year that it's been before us. I don't believe there's anybody here from the church representing themselves this evening. There is?
I will make a motion to approve the off-premise craft show signs for Zion Lutheran Church as presented. Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, this is an item regarding bids and a recommendation for the 2014 Lake Street Improvement Project. There were three bids that the city received. The recommendation this evening is for Reith Riley Construction. They were the lowest bidder at $56,840. The request is, however, to add a 5% contingency that would equal an additional $2,842 to that price. There is a bidder from Cadillac, but even taking into consideration the contingency number and the 5% purchasing option, the bidder from Cadillac is still a little bit higher than Reith Riley out of Broad. Bruce is here, if there's any questions about the project itself, as well as I. Did you have anything to add, Bruce?
No, just fixing the worst street in town.
I know there was an article in the paper yesterday, but what's the start date?
They have to get it done before November 1st, and I heard they wanted to do it sometime in October, so...
Mr. Pacha, is this the project that, the portion of Lake Street, is this the one that we initially were looking at the funds that we share with the...
Yes.
The Wexford County Road Commission?
That is correct.
And then, so we're, I know that we didn't meet that deadline, unfortunately, to do that, but could we be using those funds again this year? Are we going to have to, did we lose out since we weren't there? Did we lose out on that rotation for, like, the next three or four times, or how was that finalized?
Not for the next three or four times, but for this current cycle, yes, we aren't going to be able to obtain those funds. I believe that we will be up the next rotation of the next cycle that comes forward, and we have a lot of other projects that we would love to be able to throw that money at.
Marcus, along with what Councilmember Stevens just asked, you know, this time around, I understood it was because we didn't have a project in the hopper that was ready to go. So, if we know this, when this next cycle is going to hit, is it our intention to get some of these street projects in there? And have them in the hopper and ready to go? So, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask, too, on that, is this, is if there could be more confidence than we believe that we are, if we could find out how that arrangement's going to be now, so we don't get surprised later that, are we going to be the next one, or do we lose out for the next? Because if we don't get it this time, it sounds like it's going to be a while. But it would be nice, piggybacking what you're saying, just to get a clarification now, so that when a project comes up, it's already determined.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the 2014 Lake Street Improvement Project to Reith Riley Construction, accordance with their bid, of $56,840 and an additional 5% contingency. Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The council packet contains several documents, some of which I believe you've received in the past. There might be some additional copies of memorandums that you have not seen before this evening necessarily, relating to the Cadillac-Wexford Transit Authority interlocal Agreement. The City Council, just for a quick frame of reference, when they met to interview appointees, potential appointees, city appointees to the board, to the Wexford Transit Authority Board, did discuss the desire to have additional appointees and/or possible city membership members to the CWTA Board itself. The county administrator and I did have a discussion about that rather recently, and we are looking at getting a group together. This evening, accordingly, we're requesting Mayor appoint two members from the council to serve in the role of meeting with myself and the county administrator, and representatives from the county Board of Commissioners, for the purposes of reviewing the interlocal agreement, at least specifically at this time regarding the membership component. There might be other areas that come up, but at least the membership component initially, to look at adding either the city's ability to appoint new members, or possibly, and/or possibly expanding the number of members in total to the board.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pacha in regards to that topic? Or the work that needs to be done?
It seems like a little bit of a critical issue for the CWTA, with all of the board members resigning, except for one. And I know that they are scrambling to try to figure out how they're going to write checks, especially payroll checks, by September 8th. So, whoever gets assigned to this committee has to plan on having a meeting fairly soon, is my understanding.
Yeah, if I may add, the current remaining board member to the CWTA is the city's one and only board member. The other board members at this time are currently solely the responsibility of the county to appoint. I'm not aware yet if there's going to be any emergency proceedings taking place by the county to appoint new members before their payroll or opening payroll date. But I do think that there certainly is some timeliness to the discussion between the city members and the county members, in looking at this section, getting additional members possibly onboard.
Okay. Well, if I'm to appoint two members, I guess I would like to ask the council who may be interested in serving in this capacity.
These meetings be scheduled at after-school hours, Mr. Pacha?
We can, you know, schedule, I'll say whenever. I don't know really what that means, Councilmember Shippers. Presumably, we'll work collaboratively to get a time that'll make the most sense of it for everyone that's involved, so...
I'd be interested in participating at this, but I couldn't meet before 4 o'clock, probably. I'd be willing to do it. There you go.
Okay. If someone would like to make a motion to have the appointment of Councilmember Shippers and Councilmember Spelman to serve on this interlocal group, to talk about the agreement.
I'm assuming it's a task force that has, that's kind of short-lived.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah, ad hoc.
Just to get this... Ad hoc.
So, depending on how fast you work.
Okay.
The other, you know, this group can work very fast, but it's also my understanding that we agree that any changes to it require state approval through the AG's office, especially even the governor, so...
So, we would have to work really fast, because then it's going to hurry up and wait.
Yeah, and I think that the, because of the urgent situation they found themselves in, it has to work. I mean, it has to get moving down the tracks, so...
I'll make a motion that we appoint to the ad hoc committee for the purpose of discussing the CWTA interlocal agreement, to be Councilmember Shippers and Councilmember Spelman.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is the request for an endorsement of the City of Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council. This is a new initiative that Mayor Filkins brought to my attention rather recently.
And Councilmember Shippers, as well.
Yes, and Councilmember Shippers, thank you. Brought to my attention rather recently with respect to the development of a youth council that would provide an opportunity for City of Cadillac residents between 14 and 18 years old to serve essentially in a capacity on a board that would sort of mock or mirror a city council. They won't have any, you know, it's not a public board, they're not creating another layer of government, but really, what we're creating or looking at creating is an experience for these folks to get involved in community service, public service, talk about issues that affect youth today, and to try to get, I think upwards of perhaps nine people involved, nine youth involved in any one period in time. There's already been some interest expressed to us from the Cadillac area JCs with respect to trying to help facilitate this group. You even mentioned of maybe helping with some fundraising component to it. And I thought that it would be appropriate to bring it to this body and basically request an endorsement of moving forward with the council. I'm not sure if there's anything more to add. Probably a youth liaison piece.
Yeah, yeah. We actually brought this forward to Marcus in the last couple of weeks or so. It's something that both Councilmember Shippers and myself are very passionate about, and it was, it was something that we both wanted to see come to fruition, so we've spent many hours talking about the concept. And in my recent time that I've spent with some of the JCs here in town, it is something that they would be absolutely interested in helping to facilitate for us. They would be here with the meetings when they happen. Councilmember Shippers would be the youth council advisory person. And then the JCs would act as the clerk or a Sandy to guide them through the processes. And then the rest of us may be called upon to participate at different times to, you know, talk about the roles that we play within the wards that we represent. And if we have two young people from each ward, then depending on each council member's desire, you can spend some time with them to talk about how, you know, talk about things that are happening specifically in that part of the city, or things that they might want to seek your guidance on. The JCs also, from a national and a state level, have resources available to us, so this really isn't going to cost us anything to be able to put such a program in. And they can bring education materials, education sessions to our youths, and they know about volunteering in the community. So, I think that their leadership with this program is going to make it absolutely successful. So, did you want to add anything?
Just that, as Mayor Filkins said, this is something that I've been really interested in pursuing for quite a while. I spoke about it in the last election cycle several times. And I think it's so important that, you know, I hear, I work with children, I'm a school teacher, and I hear from the young people how, oh, there's nothing for them, what do they, what do they have to do, you know? And I'm like, if you get involved, then there's something to do. So, this is a way to reach out to our kids in each of the wards and let them apply for this. And I think it would be a wonderful experience, and just a way for us as a community to show the young people that we are interested in them participating, and for them to have a chance to participate in a meaningful way.
And our vision is actually to be able to have one of the chairs at the end of our table here, to have the youth mayor sit with us during the council meeting, so that they can experience the whole thing.
The fray.
Yeah, just listen and participate.
Well, this is, I mean, this is great, because this has been talked about for 15 years.
Yeah.
And actually, we never got it to that next step. The Michigan Municipal League, I went to two of those conferences, those were the breakout sessions. But this is great, I really think they have a resource, the Michigan Municipal League and the National League of Cities, that establishes, there's a list of probably, from Novi to Rochester Hills to Sterling Heights, Lansing, Zeeland, they have all these that have that structure. And I really think, in doing this, we should tie in with their, with them.
That's what we've been doing, I've been doing a lot of research.
Just to make sure we got it laid out, you know, like they have, they've got conferences as well. And then when they, we have the Michigan Municipal League Conference, some of those youth councils actually attend those conferences as well. But that would be the one thing I think we'll really add, is just having the, be it, I don't want to say certified, but under the program of the Michigan Municipal League, and how they, there's flexibility, but that it's structured, that it's kind of encompasses what they have as part of their system.
Yep, and Councilmember Spelman also shared with us that the extension office has resources available to us as well. So, we really feel as though we're going to be able to put together a program that will be invaluable to the young people who are interested in participating. And, you know, we're going to open the doors, and they'll walk through them, so we're excited about it.
We can provide training on parliamentary procedure. Just think, and it's so exciting to me, because, you know, when I, when I think about, when I was a kid, if I'd have had an opportunity like this, it would have been just so exciting. I just, I remember referring to City Council as a puppet, or to Student Council as a puppet government, and so starting a student union, and I was way back then. But all of these different resources, and using these different models and different resources, and making that clear to the young people that are participating, that so many of these resources are out there, is also a really important thing to model, because you can find out anything you need to know, if you know where to look. And I think that's going to be one of the things that they're going to discover working with us.
And what's going to be special about this, too, is that it's not going to be, you know, whether they're an athlete, or whether they're in the band, or whether they're, it's about, they live in the City of Cadillac, and they live... it's about, they live in the City of Cadillac and they live in the ward that they live in. And we're going to have an application process that even kids that might not be participating in student government at the high school, if there's a true interest, there's a lot of students at the high school. So they maybe aren't having that opportunity right now. So this opens another opportunity for, for some other kids to participate if that's their desire. So they will personally, you know, fill out that application and, you know, provide the essay and go through the interview process. And, you know, it could be a very different mix of, of young people that sit here with us. So that's kind of exciting too.
And I hope it is.
Okay, so with that being said then, we would just need to look for a motion to endorse the City of Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council and the appointment of council member Shippers as the youth council liaison.
So moved. Motion to endorse the City of Cadillac's Mayor's Youth Council and the appointment of council member Shippers as the council liaison.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is a council retreat update and request to amend the regular meeting schedule. On the 22nd of August, Friday, August 22nd, the city council and staff met as a part of a retreat. The group met with the facilitator and we did discuss a variety of items and themes, including but unlimited to values, relationships, process, and leadership. There was a lot of feedback that was solicited throughout the day, especially through the facilitation aspect of, of the day itself. And as a part of that, the council did approve core value key words and guiding behavior statements that I'd like to read. Core value key words are respect, integrity, trust, and excellence, spelled out as the acronym of RITE, R-I-T-E, with guiding behaviors including the following. We support each other in serving our community. We communicate openly, honestly, respectfully, and directly. We are fully present. We are all accountable. We trust and assume goodness and intentions, and we are continuous learners. As a part of the council retreat, there were, as I mentioned, several themes that were discussed. Some of the themes, or one of the themes included self-care. And I think as a part of that, that part of the conversation, there was some discussion with respect to council meeting times and breaks. And as, as an outcome of that, there was a suggestion being made about starting our regular city council meetings at 6:00 PM. And then perhaps a couple of hours into the meeting, the city clerk would make some form of a motion to indicate that it's two hours in. At that point, we might take a quick recess or a quick break and then just reevaluate the number of items that are left with respect to continuing on or, or tabling anything that could possibly be tabled to, to another, to another meeting date and time. The action item for this evening, however, is simply with respect to the resetting, if you will, of the regular city council meeting start time to 6:00 PM from the 7:00 PM current start. That was clear? Sorry if I came across a little confusing.
That was clear.
Okay.
And I would just, I would just like to share with the council members that weren't at the retreat that this was a conversation that, it was a good conversation with members of the staff and council members. And, you know, truly it's about taking care of ourselves. And if we had the opportunity to move the meeting to 6:00, it gives the employees and even those of us, you know, working during the day, it gives us an opportunity to get out of work, grab a bite to eat, and be here at the city offices by 6:00 without necessarily having to go home and, and then gets us, gets us done if it's a two-hour meeting or even if it's a three-hour meeting. It gets everyone home earlier in the evening. And it was something that the staff really appreciated talking about. I would, I would just say that out front.
So the, a couple of questions. Historically, we'll do work sessions on the budget. Meetings, we do them at 5:00, 5:15. We've sometimes had to do a couple more. Was that discussed, how that would, the earlier start would affect in terms of taking away that opportunity? And lately, we've had just as many special meetings before. But is, it was addressed in terms of how we're going to deal with, that doesn't leave us enough time unless we're looking at an earlier start on those.
Well, we would, we would, we could have an earlier start. There's certainly options. We could have an earlier start. We could start at 4:30 if that works for all the council members. Or depending on what kind of a work session it is, maybe we schedule it on a different day. If we don't have to have the attorney here, we could schedule it on a different day and then we wouldn't have such a long, you know what I mean? If we, say if we had a budget session, for instance. So we spend two hours in a budget session and then we have to come into this meeting. You know, four hours is, is a long block. So I don't know. I guess, I guess I think that there's options regarding that.
Yeah, I think we talked about having the work sessions. If, if we had to go longer, obviously we'd have to start earlier, like at 4:00 or 4:30. And then we also talked about being able to have them after the meeting, if I remember right.
We did.
Because we'd be getting done with our meeting presumably earlier, so we could
Yeah, that was another option.
Have a little bit of time after that.
So the time is still there. It would just be on the backend, which it would just involve us and not necessarily the, the staff members. They, they could go home if they weren't involved in the, in the work session.
The, the write-up on this, the council communication, I gotta tell you, had a little bit of nervousness and I don't know, I want to know clarification. But the 6:00 is the one item. The other item that I had concern on though, beside that, was this notion that we would, after two hours, decide to potentially stop the meeting and adjourn it when we have other items on our agenda. And so I'm not, I'm trying to find out a clarification. Is this part of the plan is if we are going forward on this? Or, because I do have a lot of uncomfortableness with, you know, we're, we're here to do the, the business of the city. And sometimes it's going to take more than two hours. And, and for us to have six, seven items where we're saying, we're going to adjourn you to the next meeting. We have people that travel that come to this. Or we have people that come to the meeting, we're, we're approving the agenda. I, I just think it's a responsibility of us as elected officials that we fulfill that agenda. Now, once in a while, there's going to be items that we may have to table. But to table multiple items or to get the concept to the public that we got to rush or we have to, you know, we got a timeline here, we got to get rolling. I just, I really am uncomfortable with that aspect.
Well, I think that, and, and council member Spelman can speak to it because she's the one who suggested it. But it isn't, so I just threw her on the list.
We need to use the bathroom.
But, you know, when we sit here, and luckily we haven't had a lot of long meetings since, since I've been sitting here. But the point was, we need to take care of each other. And, you know, when you ask us to sit here or when we ask ourselves to sit here for three hours, that's a long time. So the suggestion was, after two hours, let's just take a break in the, in the agenda so everybody can get up, you know, get a drink of water and use the restroom and then come back. And then the other thought, the rest of the discussion was for discussion here this evening about, you know, you actually saw this somewhere, didn't you, researching it?
Right, yeah. This is what other, a lot of other boards do, actually. They put a timeline on their agenda. And part of it is my desire at least for us to become a little bit more efficient with our time. And if we can, you know, move forward at a, at a nice clip and be prepared when we get here and try to get everything done in two hours as a goal, that, you know, to me, that's much more attractive than sitting here for really long meetings, especially if we have people waiting to get on the agenda. I have no intention of saying, okay, two hours is up and we're not done now. I'm sorry you drove from Grand Rapids or Leroy or wherever, or you live in Cadillac and you're still sitting here. We're not going to deal with you until the next time we meet. That's not the intention at all. But it is to try to establish some timeframes and some efficiencies in the way we do business. And also for us to take a break, frankly. You know, I think we've all have memories of sitting here for a really long, uncomfortable period of time, wishing that we could at least just take a little bit of a break, step away and then come back and finish our business. And so if we had it as a standard agenda item break at this time, and whether it's two hours or two and a half hours, I've seen it at two hours, I've seen it at three hours in different county boards around the region.
One of the other things that was talked about, and I don't know how this would work, but to like put a time, I know when I do like teach workshops, I, I put a time, you know, when certain things are, approximate time when certain things are going to be on the agenda. And I'm thinking that, I remember being here before, being on council for things and really on the, looking on the agenda and it's like four things down and sitting out there for over three hours waiting for that item. And, and so the people that come before us and want to speak would have an idea of what time, approximately what time those things would come. So they wouldn't have to sit from the very beginning, sit through other things, could come in and out at, at the time of their thing. I think that honors the busy schedules of the people that come before us. I don't, I'm, I, I would not, it would be an unusual case in which I would say, okay, we've, I've had enough, let's not do the rest of the business. But I really think that at a break time, you know, there is no way that, you know, I'm going to sit here and go, excuse me. And there have been times that it's been like, but it, you know, what do you do? Can we, I have to, have to potty, you know? And, and so if we just have that built in, it's sort of, you know.
Then that makes, the break part, you know, that makes sense. I just, what I was, and I was worried, one of the notes I put was, it's not as much about this council, but when we make a decision, we have to make sure we're making a decision for a future council.
Exactly.
That's true.
And you just don't want to see where it gets to the point. You know, our, the public is our, that's who we're here for.
Our customers.
And when they come to an agenda, we, we should. And, and it's a hard mix. We want to be efficient, but we also don't want that, that theory out here. We're rushing. We got to rush this. We got to rush this. We, you know, and so it's a hard mix of being efficient and make sure we're taking care of business. And I'm good with this, especially if we promote it well enough. If we're, we're not voting with this, that we're going to
Quit after two hours. Yeah, no, that's not even close to it.
I'd say it as the chair or the mayor, you know, at that time, just at least acknowledging it. And saying, is everybody okay with just going another five minutes if we've only got one more item on the agenda? Or do we want a break?
Oh, the, the break, yeah.
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 And maybe we're, like she said, maybe we're close enough to the end of the agenda that we don't even have to have one in this meeting.
You know, with the break versus the
Right. But if it looks like the meeting's going to go on for another half hour or 45 minutes, we're going to want to, you know, have Sandy give me the nod and then, you know, we're just going to take a three to five minute break and then come back.
This could take me three minutes to stand up, so it's got to be at least five.
If I may just toss something out here as well, we might experiment with throwing some times out to, to council on the agenda worksheet that I give you guys that talks about potential motions to make. One of the things that, some of the things that, that I was a part of in a, in a organization prior to here is putting some time estimates on items. And I'll be the first to also say that it almost became like a betting pool between staff because, you know, it was unusual if it actually hit, you know, exactly the amount of time that we were estimating, to use that term, an item was going to take. Some items took, you know, triple the time, other items took, you know, half the time. But it was just somewhat of a reminder, okay, you know, if you're expecting a presentation by, you know, an outside consultant or a group of people that are coming in, you know, this, this is going to take longer. Here's kind of where you think things are at. But I think part of the reason for that also is because we had, members of the public would ask council members ahead of time, hey, when do you think, you know, this is going to happen? When do you think that's going to happen? So they used it as a gauge, but always told people, look, you know, we're going to be safe, you got to get here when the meeting starts because we just don't know if it could go faster, if it could go longer.
Well, you know, in, you know, in my work, in my day job, you know, and probably Sherri can attest to the same thing, I never go into a meeting that doesn't have a timeframe on it. Because, you know, it's out of respect for people's schedules and when people have to be where. We've had people walk up and leave the chambers because we've gone on so long about things that they're not going to stay for a public comment because it could be lord knows what time. And so, you know, I think that this is, this is going to be a satisfier for our city staff. And I think it's going to be a satisfier for the community too, for people who may want to come and, you know, either be put on the agenda or have the opportunity to speak at the end of it. And certainly it's, you know, if we need to go longer, we'll go longer. I mean, like, you know, we might have a really heavy agenda and we'll just know we're going to take a break at two hours.
So my question is, is if we do go ahead with this, when would we start it?
Meetings would start at 6:00.
Yeah, like
We would have to notice people.
Do we need to give the public a month or so notice or, I mean, because it's posted everywhere. Our schedule's actually posted in advance. I suppose we could start right away, but
Why don't we start at like the first meeting in October? So that gives us a month. Is that all right?
I can concur with the time. I, I'd be willing to give that a try and see how it works. And also, we could also put something up on the website and see how people like it. You know, that's one of the first things you do when you, in business, is determine what's your customer because we're here for our citizens. We aren't here for ourselves, at least I hope not. And the second thing is, as far as a break, yeah. I, there have been times where I think I need to stand up to eliminate anything off the agenda. I think when people look through the agenda, everybody has a certain area they want to hear or they want to hear what we have to say about it. And so I'd be real hesitant in doing that. But a break, yeah, I can see that when it's a period of time. Five-minute break, a stretch, seventh inning stretch, whatever you want to call it. But I think that we should put something up on the page, webpage, and see what citizens think of it. Because like I said, we're here for them, not for us, hopefully.
Would it be inappropriate to just ask people for like a show of hands? I mean, these are people that are here for a lot of the meetings. Could we just ask? Is that okay to do?
Sure.
Would you mind raising your hand if 6:00 would be okay as a good time? Look at those eager hands popping up. 6:00 would work? And the other meetings are at 6:00. The boards, counties at 6:00. I think that just makes so much sense for the people that come in at 9:00.
You know, while we're on the
Or 7:00.
The meeting agenda schedule, one other comment that I hear a lot, and we end up half the time changing it, is, is do we just say public comment on both of them? We have some people staying until 11:30 or midnight to give a public comment on something that's not on the agenda. I, I would really like to see us consider just opening both of them up and sometimes somebody will come up. For example, the one gentleman about his water bill and he waited for like three hours just to address that. And I, it, we half the time
If they ask, we always let them.
I'm, I'm okay either way.
I, I think that would be something, because that's something I've heard a lot from the public as well as
A lot?
A lot. Yeah, I'm not going to do a show
That same guy's called him six or eight times.
That's right. I even sent it to myself.
I'm good with that too, because
Council members Stevens and members of council, if it's I, we can just make a note of that. Just going to call it just general public comment.
Sure. So we'll just have two general public comment?
I'll make a motion to amend the regular meeting schedule to reflect a 6:00 PM
We'll make a motion to amend the regular meeting schedule to reflect a 6:00 PM start time effective with our Octo, with our meetings in October.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Do we have to make a motion about comments or no? That's, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is an update on my city manager goals. I did pass out a couple of pages to everybody this evening, and I thought I would just kind of briefly run through them. These have been talked about previously, and I have been working with Mayor Filkins and Councilmember Spelman on these since, well, probably since last fall, when we first had them discussed. With respect to, the first page is under Personnel Management. Identified the following statement, in an effort to increase employee morale and enhance and improve overall personnel management citywide, the following strategies will be employed. I listed about a half a dozen or so strategies, including participation and training and also the provision of training opportunities across the board, the amending and developing of policies, as well as providing additional personnel guidance through myself, HR and other resources, surveying of staff, meeting with staff, departmental spotlights when able, development of core values, and development of a formal staff review program. At this time, I can advise, I have participated in a six-month training series offered through the International City County Managers Association. Additionally, I have completed and presented to council last fall an employee survey that I conducted. I have restarted an all-hands meeting with various levels of staff within the organization, continue to meet and solicit feedback from our operations, and I am working with our personnel manager on a complete and thorough policy review program that is definitely going to take quite a while to implement, and will be ongoing as well. The next key area was relationship with council, and the statement I put in there was to improve communications by being clear, concise, timely, consistent. Some of the, some of the strategies I listed include focus on clarity in communications, formally advised when out of the office for extended periods, such as when on vacation, communicate the backup procedure, development of a new communications tool, and then I also listed the coordination of council retreat with an outside facilitator. I have put in within the estimated timeframe slash update about how I am communicating clear with respect to notifications when out of the office, that has included some backup information, whether it's including contacting additional staff or other numbers to call. I have also implemented a weekend bullets program as a new communications tool, where I have been sharing updates on various projects and discussions that aren't necessarily yet at the, at the council meeting level, and have coordinated a council retreat. The last primary area had to deal with decision-making, and as I mentioned here in my statement, to make and implement the best decisions in a timely fashion based on the best available information and analysis of the issue. I went a little more academic with respect to this one, talking about how being consistent in the decision-making process, willing to take risks and involve others. I mentioned essentially some decision-making techniques that I'm, that I'm trying to employ with everything that I do, including situational appraisal, problem analysis, decision analysis, and then sort of the, the after analysis of potential problem analysis after a final decision has been made. Additionally, looking at some leadership traits, because it's all in my mind, very closely connected, you know, needing to have strong faith in team members' abilities and belief in others, needing to really be positive and optimistic, needing to be sensitive and to make others feel strong and empowered, and also to not be highly critical, and to be willing to share control of projects and willing to also assign critical tasks. I mentioned here about how, you know, I have, you know, discussed, and this is back, back several months ago, but have discussed with my department heads, you know, what my expectations are more clearly, because I think, I think it's really been helpful in them having a really sort of firm idea as to what I'm looking for when working in project management and on their own goals. And I, and I certainly do meet with them on an individual basis as well. I also threw in there is, is just another sort of, for instance, working alongside with the T R D project, as that sort of progresses and evolves over time, working with, with a large group of individuals as a part of that as well, and to use these key areas in decision-making processes as time goes on. That was it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So you, you mentioned that you, where did it come up? You've been working with the mayor and councilmember Spelman on what, determining your goals or what's the?
No, 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 no. We've actually, his goals were already written, and earlier in the year, I had said that I would accept accountability to work with Marcus, to make sure that I was there as a guide and to make sure that we were moving forward. And Sheri had been talking to him last fall before I came in, so she, you know, she's been a part of some of the discussions that we've had in areas where Marcus either sought input or we felt like we needed to have some discussion to keep him, keep him on track.
I knew we were going to do some more update, like, are we looking at, I mean, this isn't for his new year coming up, we are going to be going back into.
We're going to do another one.
I just, if I may, want to remind council that when we did the performance review last year, those, those were, these were those three areas.
Okay, sure.
That rose to the top or sunk to the bottom, however you want to look at it, that were the areas that, as a council, we felt he needed the most work on. This is the ones with the lowest scores. So that's what I encouraged Marcus to do, is just focus on those. He had a long list of goals, and I wanted them, him to really focus on those three areas that we had the most concern about.
And so that's why we asked that he provide this update to the whole council, so that we would know where he's at and we could ask questions. I, I would say, Marcus, that the weekend bullets, for me, I really like the format that you've provided. I think it's kind of gone back to a bit like the council used to get from past city manager. And so it's much more concise than the, the other newsletter that you put out. And I like the conciseness, because it's the need to know or the council needs to know. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I really like it too.
Me too.
Things that we don't necessarily talk about at coun, at council, but it's just to keep us abreast of all the little things that are happening.
Thank you.
Now, I do have a question, Marcus. If you don't mind my asking, working with HR on policy review and, and review of program, are you working on that to roll that out in its complete format, or are you subcategorizing it so you can start rolling some of it out?
It is, I'm going to, I'm going to just say it's overwhelming. We have a number of responses.
So perhaps subcategorizing it would be a good way to like, take a bite out of it?
And that is how we're looking at it, is in, is in pieces. And there are, you know, there are some areas that are going to likely be updated before other areas are updated. We're also, Todd and I have talked, Todd is our HR manager, talked about maybe bringing in another department head or two and biting off a piece of it to give us some feedback on what changes they may like to see as well. I mean, there's, it really hasn't been touched in years and years and years, so.
Well, it may be good, and I, I haven't looked at it, obviously, but it may be good to kind of draw the whole picture and then decide how you can break it up. And it's really a good idea to bring in the different managers on their own policies to get that input from them. I think that that would be a really wise thing to do.
The one question, and I, just to be sure on the term, the survey, the completed and presented, you're not saying the 360 survey by the, the employees evaluation? I know we talked about that.
No, this was a citywide survey that I conducted at council's request.
That initial one? So is there, what is the status of the 360 degree survey we were going to be implementing?
Right, and, and we had talked about that early on, and I guess what I would like to ask the council is if we could get through this first year with my being here, so we can kind of have a better feel for things, and when we go through that process as a whole team, that evaluation process as a whole team, then talk about whether or not we feel like that is something we should do.
I was thinking we already kind of came to a consensus, we were having that done.
Well, yeah. We did very early on, but, you know, after having the opportunity to work through some of these things, because we didn't do it early on, as I was getting my feet wet, we didn't do it early on. So now my ask is that perhaps we can, you know, wait until this fall.
And do it in this evaluation.
Isn't that, this right here, develop a formal staff review program?
Uh, no.
Or not? That's different.
That's, that's for him, for performance reviews, yeah. So it's not, it's not off the plate, but if, if the council would agree to that, I'd like to just kind of see for a year and then we five can sit and have a discussion together about, you know, putting, putting that together and whether we should go through that. Anything else? Thank you, Marcus.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is expansion of the issues and ideas over coffee program. In January 2012, the issues and ideas over coffee program started, it was developed by councilmember Malama, essentially as a tool to provide an opportunity for anyone to come and meet informally at a local restaurant to talk and convey their thoughts about city issues, provide ideas for improving the city, and or asking questions regarding the city in general. The program has been running in that same fashion since 2012. It was brought up earlier this year about looking at possibly changing it, creating a rotation schedule where there would be a different member of council essentially hosting the meeting every, you know, every other month. And so while each member represents a different ward, I think the thought was, that I had heard was perhaps to expand the program to include a rotation so that if this month was councilmember Malama, next month might be councilmember Shippers, following month might be councilmember Stevens, and so on. And then getting that out and advertising it in that fashion, where it would say, you know, issues and ideas over coffee, you know, to be held at such and such time, at such and such location with councilmember X, whoever that would be. And so that's why I put this on the agenda this evening for city council to, to discuss, essentially.
And I was the person who, who brought that up, and I flew the idea out there and said it's not something we needed to decide at that time, I just wanted people to think about it. I think the concept of it is very good, and actually, you know, I've had councilmember Shippers and councilmember Spelman mention that they would like to be involved in it. And I've also had people in the community say that, you know, if the concept of it is really good, I'd like to have the opportunity to meet with my councilperson. So I thought about it from the perspective that, you know, the concept is great and we have an idea as, or we have the opportunity as a council to make it even better, to meet and reach out to more people. You know, people might be comfortable coming when TI is there than would, and it might be different when, when ART is there or, you know, vice versa. So I just wanted to bring it here for discussion, because if it's something that, you know, I, I understand that we're spending $200 a month on issues and ideas over coffee, and if we're going to make that investment, then it should be something that we all participate in, I think, if, if that's what I'm hearing. So I just wanted to get everybody on the same page with that.
I just, you know, I've expressed this already, so it's not going to be new. But, you know, we never had this before. It was councilmember Malama that brought it up. It was a solution he brought to the table. It was his concept. You know, I got to ask, I think we all know the answer, how many have went there with him? He's always opened it up to whoever. How many have went? How many have actually spoke with him personally on this, or contacted him and said, hey, I'd like to go with you? You know, there hasn't seemed to be an interest in this. He saw an issue, it was brought out by the public, he stepped forward with a solution. It's at 10 o'clock, it's issues and solutions over coffee or ideas, I know there's been different names, and it's given people an avenue. I guess my point is, what stops, this is councilmember Malama's, we all could do something like this if we want, or not have it with the staff. You know, but we've got, councilmember Malama, I look at this as, and I, and I perceive this as, this is a, you know, let's, let's kind of punish the guy. And I, this is something he's done, we've never had any issues. If I want to do one of these, I, I think I could start my own, any one of us, we all could. The more we have doing it, the better. He's doing it every month, and I already can see the looks, I know you guys got your mind made, but I, I just don't want to see, it's getting obvious as we see these committee discussions and structures where it's heading. And I know I'm on that. I know I'm not going to be part of this stuff. This is all going to be certain members. I'm on the board of review, I'm also not dumb to know that. That's because it's a terrible committee. If it was, if it was anything that you guys.
It's because you do it so well.
No, it's not.
It's, that's a good answer, but I know if that was something that you, it would be, I'd be off of it. I know how this is going, but, you know, the councilmember Malama, the solutions, he's brought the job creation plan, the, the regional economic development plan. This is another solution he's brought, where we for the first time have coordinated with all the townships, the county, other agencies. That plan's going to get implemented here soon with this new project that's coming to development. The job creation plan's going to be implemented. The innovation center, the incubator, the, he's helped get the grants for that. We're going to have an innovation center here. And what I'm concerned, he's doing all this stuff behind the scenes, he was proactive, and I can see down the road, as soon as this gets to a point where it's more structured, he's going to be taken off. And that's what I'm, I'm afraid of, is we're going to have this job creation plan that's going to get implemented, a regional plan. And he's done all this pre-work, and then they'll be removed. And I, I just don't want to see this happen. I do believe this is his plan, and let's all do it. I don't mind doing mine and not having, you mentioned the cost, it doesn't need to be. I don't need to implement staff time. If all five of us were out doing this on a monthly basis and that dedicated, we reach that many more people. That's my thoughts.
Well, I can't do it on a monthly basis, probably, but I would be interested in doing it once in a while, and I don't know how the staff can do it for all council. And I don't know how the staff can do it for all councilmembers every month. It's a good program, I think, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. You know, when I, when I thought about it, I thought, well, we should probably pilot it, because if we're putting a lot of resources into it, and we don't have very many people show up, then we have to question whether or not it's really a good use of our resources.
Well, let me answer that question. First of all, I don't know who wrote up why I ever took this on, but I took it on in 2012, and I'm sure somebody could FOIA the tape and find out my reason why. It had to do with a campaign for mayor. And there was accusations that were made that were totally, totally unfounded. I even made the statement, I don't want us to become like Washington and Lansing. And I was so irate about some of the statements about grants, about finances, and other things that were going on that really weren't going on, and they were attacks, attacks not only on council, which I expect, you know, you better have thick hide when you're a council member, but they were on staff. And so that's the reason I went with the Issues Over Coffee. I did not ask staff that they needed to come along. I was willing to go by myself, that wasn't a problem. But if staff wanted to attend, I don't tell Marcus who, how many should be there, or I need staff to be there to hold my hand. So let's take that one off the table. The second thing is, Art's been there three or four times. The former mayor has stopped in very quickly, and he had a court hearing, so he had to leave. So I've never said to any councilperson, man, I don't want to share the stage with anybody else. I've never said that, nor is that my style. So as far as I'm concerned, like I said at the last meeting, if you choose to change it, count me out. I'll do it on my own. I'll pay my own money. I'll buy the coffee myself, because it's important to reach out to people and to hear what they have to say. As far as in my ward, that's ridiculous. I mean, we all run citywide, and the thing is, is that I get as many phone calls from other wards as I do my own, probably more. So, you know, you can choose what you want to do, but as far as advertising it, I'll find another way to advertise it. But I will do it. I will continue myself, no matter what you choose to do. That's my bottom line.
You know, I just, I want to be honest with you and say, I'm having a really difficult time understanding why you wouldn't want to continue to do it and have other councilmembers do it on a rotating basis with you. If it's a program that, in your opinion, works, and I think that you're saying that it is, and it's a good opportunity to meet with the citizens, why wouldn't you be interested in expanding it so that we can all participate in it?
Where have you been in the last two and a half years?
I don't believe I, you've ever said, if there are any other councilmembers-
I have said-
-to attend this with me, please come. I don't remember that.
Councilmember Stevens has been there, I have said that. And every meeting, I report on exactly-
You do.
And I say what went on and some of the discussion.
Yeah.
And I even add the forms, and I, you know, give them out to people, and they turn them in, and I follow up on them. But I've never excluded anyone.
No, I, but that's different than inviting somebody, or asking somebody to participate. And, you know, I'm going to go back to my original question, I don't know why you wouldn't want to do this on a rotating basis with everybody. I really am having a hard time understanding that.
So, in other words, what I need to do then is, one of the months, I need to drop off and not do it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, if that, if that's what it is, that you wouldn't be doing it as many times, I understand that.
So I'd be doing it, okay, every fourth month. That certainly wasn't my intent in taking this on in the first place.
You know, and actually, and I know that you're not taking it this way, but actually, this is a compliment to a program that we believe we can reach more people with.
We just said that you addressed the concern, your concern about the resources, or somebody did about-
Yeah.
If we all did it-
No, if we all did it-
Extending the resources on this, and if it's been-
But you didn't understand it, she was talking about if we all did it every month, there wouldn't be enough resources to go around. In other words, if we all met on a monthly basis-
Or did it the same format.
At the same time.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be enough resources to go around. If we stayed with the monthly format, but just changed, I mean, it's a compliment to your program, Doug, it's not, it's not an attack.
Can I make a, can I, can I say something, please? I'm, I'm hearing from Councilmember Malama, I'm really hearing your passion about this. I'm also, when, you know, the word punish or something, it surprised me, believe me, and I know it must feel like things are going south with, with the sewer thing, and then wanting to expand this. And, and I, I hear you. And I, I would like to say that, you know, that people that would normally, you know, we've discussed about people that would maybe like to talk to me, or like to talk to Sherri, or somebody else, to have that, to be part of that. But I've had people ask me questions, and I've sent them to your, to your meeting. Unfortunately, a 10 a.m. is something that I'm just not going to be able to participate in. And there are a lot of other people that wouldn't be able to participate in that either. So what I was, what I was kind of hoping is to have like a two different times, one in the, you know, evening, one in the morning, and, and switch that off to allow more people to participate with it. Never was my intention to, like, punish you or to take something from you. That was far beyond my intention. And I also, you know, I, I want, I know that, you know, my, my inclusive sense feels like this is something we should, we should all be sharing. But on the same token, you know, I have to say that, for example, this youth council is something that is really my passion. And it's something that I've researched and worked on and looked for, and, and done the legwork on. And I think, I think this is something that Councilmember Malama has really put, put the time in and put the energy into. And perhaps what we could do is an Issues Over Coffee with Councilmember Malama, and an Issues Over Oh, Wine with somebody else at a different time, so that it's not him not having it. I think that, and I don't think it's, I don't think that it's him trying to control the information. I think this is something that he's just really passionate about, and I really believe that. And that, I don't want, I don't want to have people feeling that like we're trying to punish councilmembers, this whole us and them thing is freaking the heck out of me. And, and this is not, this is not what we're about. There's lots of changes going on, and changes are good, but I just, I don't know, it's clear that Councilmember Malama feels like this is something being, that was his idea that's being taken from him. And I don't want to be, I don't want to do that. You know, I, I would like to expand it, absolutely. But I'm, you know, judging by what he says, once every four months is not, is not gonna, not gonna suffice. So can we maybe back up on this and talk together and see if we can find some kind of solution that, where there is more participation amongst us? Maybe rotating two of us at different times, so that we all get to be in there, and, you know, if, you see what I'm saying? Maybe we can come up with a solution where we're not trying, where it doesn't give the impression to our fellow members that we're punishing them.
And, and I appreciate that, and truly, this was just an opportunity for us to talk about that very thing. You know, I was trying to get it here for discussion, and to try and include everybody in that discussion in the right place. And, you know, maybe we, maybe for tonight, we just take it away, and maybe we have an assignment for whoever is interested to figure out, how do we all, how do we expand, so we're reaching those people who can't make it at 10 o'clock in the morning? How do we expand the program? Again, it was, you know, to me, it's a compliment to the program that we're trying to expand it, we're not trying to disband it, we're just trying to make it better.
Good, sounds good.
Yes.
Sorry, but I have just a suggestion, perhaps. From what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's, there's really a formatting concern as well about the time of day. And, you know, offering, offering a program that could happen after hours, or after, or later in the afternoon is just one option, which would attract different audiences as well, possibly. But maybe one of the options that council discusses over time is, as you continue the Issues and Ideas Over Coffee Program, maybe that's just what it is, it's, there's going to be a monthly Issues and Ideas Over Coffee Program, Councilmember Malama perhaps attends all of them. And then there's a rotation with the remaining members of council that either staff aids in developing, or, or not, I guess it depends on how you want to-
Well, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to bring it back to the councilmembers themselves, and if you guys will commit to putting your thinking caps on and come up with something and work with Doug, and something that's acceptable to everybody, then we can bring it back next month and, and talk about it again. And then everybody has a say, and everybody had an opportunity to throw their ideas into the hat, and hopefully, when we're finished with it, we're going to be reaching more people out in the community.
And I would, I'd also like to say that, you know, I would just like to be sure that Councilmember Malama knows how much I appreciate him doing this all this time, and being out there, that, that makes, that's, that's an important thing. So please, I, I personally never had any intention of being any kind of like, taking something away or punishing or something like that, I promise. That was not my intention.
With that being said, the next regularly scheduled one is September 10th, presumably.
Well, we'll just stay with that one, and then if you all will commit to, we'll bring back, actually, if you can get your ideas to Marcus, then maybe he can put something together that we'll have on the agenda next month to discuss. And hopefully, we'll have something that everybody agrees with, and we can share with the public.
Thank you for your, as Councilmember Shippers says, your time and the staff. I know that a lot of people come, one thing, I think there's even a form that's been made up where they can get it taken care of to the staff. And for some, with the time constraints of meetings, he's probably saved a lot of public comment or issues on the agendas over the people coming in in that environment.
Okay, then we'll move on to adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're looking to adopt a local governing body resolution for charitable gaming license. This is from New Hope Shelter, who is looking at raffling a donated quilt. This form should be somewhat familiar, it's a state of Michigan form that is required for our local legislative body to adopt in order for them to obtain their necessary raffle license.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the local government body resolution for charitable gaming license as requested by New Hope Shelter.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
And then we have the minutes of boards and commissions, and in our packets tonight, we have the minutes of the zoning board of appeals meeting held on June 19th, and the minutes of the downtown development authority that was held on July 30th for our reading pleasure. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments again. And public comments, again, would be limited to three minutes, if you would, please.
Careful.
Is it possible to incorporate a little prayer? It doesn't need to be lengthy. I wrote a little one here, but you could have one of your own. I just thought maybe with our saluting a flag and a little prayer, it might put folks in a more agreeable mood. And this is what I wrote. Please, Lord, look down on us and help us make intelligent decisions that will be for the good of Cadillac and the majority of the people. Thank you.
Okay, if there was no one else, then we'll go ahead and close public comment. Next is good of the order, and this evening, we'll start with Councilmember Stevens.
Just real quick, I wanted to thank during the goal-setting session, I know Councilmember Shippers brought up the, the youth council, and having that come as reality. It's probably showed up in goals from years before, and it never got from the goal to actually taking place. So appreciate, I remember last year, you bringing that up during the goal-setting as a, as a goal, or may, you know, of having that as an emphasis, and that was exciting to see that come to fruition as well. And, and the other thing, and I, you know, again, we, we had a discussion tonight from Mr. Reiser on the charter and the legal fees. I know I keep mentioning this, but I really want us to deal with that in terms of the legal fees and making sure we're appropriating those funds. And I, we're not doing that now, and that, that needs to happen. You can see the passion from all, all avenues about the legal fees, but we need to make sure we're doing it the correct process. And I know I keep bringing that up, and it's silenced here, but we need to make sure that we don't do that again where we're spending money without appropriating like our charter says. Thank you.
And Councilmember Malama?
Just a couple short things. One is our CAMA meeting, our manufacturers meeting is coming up September 9th. We have a guest speaker, attorney from American Society of Employers, which the city has used in the past, and it's going to be on wage and hours, a wage and hour, and it's also going to be on the new initiative in Washington on, on wages, and it'll be at Piranha House. And I also want to thank all the people that traveled on Labor Day and were in the community. I wish we could have had better weather. It's a shame, you know, I know a lot of people work all year to take a last, end of the year vacation, and sometimes Mother Nature doesn't always cooperate. So I hope people still enjoy themselves and enjoy the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Spelman? Councilmember Spohman?
I was really appreciative of David Reiser being here too and reflecting on some of the thoughts that went into the decisions that were made in the language of the charter when it was being developed and revised and reminding us about the city manager form of government that we have. And I had never heard the explanation of why the mayor all terms are only two years. And that was interesting to hear from him, the reasoning behind that, to remind the mayor that they are not the chief executive or whatever term you want to use in that. But, you know, organizations, you know, that have really good charters or bylaws, rules of governance are usually run well if they're abided by. So I appreciated hearing that. And then, yeah, I wanted to, I didn't say it earlier, but I certainly meant to before the vote that, that youth council, I think, really is a great opportunity for the youth in our community. And that, it, thank you for doing that and pushing that forward. I can't wait to see what type of response we get and looking forward to working with the kids and trying to teach them some good civil government, huh?
We'll have to work on that a little bit, but I think we can do it.
Okay. Councilmember Schippers?
Thank you. Remember, school's in session. Look out for school buses and kids in the street early in the morning and in the afternoon. Something else I want to be sure to mention is at that retreat, thanks to staff that was there and everybody who participated, I was really sorry that the whole council couldn't be in attendance. But one of the things that took a lot of time to develop were these guiding behaviors. And although we, you know, you can't, you can't come up with guiding behaviors that everybody isn't buying into. And one, these are, these are things that I think if we really do this with each other, that, that we support each other in serving our community, that all of us support all of us in serving our community, that that's one of our guiding behaviors. These are not goals or wishes. Behaviors are things that we do. The other, we communicate openly, honestly, respectfully, and directly. If I see it, I'm calling it. And I'm hoping that everybody else does that. I know I've spoken with individuals saying how I would do that and I'm, I need to continue to do that. We are fully present, meaning we really hear each other and don't come in with our minds made up on anything. I came in fully thinking that I thought it was such a great idea to expand issues over coffee and watching council member Melama become so passionate and feel hurt about this completely changed what I came in here thinking. And by being fully present, I adjusted my thinking. And I think if all of us do that, when we deal with each other, we're going to be a lot more functional. We're all accountable. That goes without saying. I say some things, sometimes I'm wiping the bottom of my shoe off of my tongue when my foot goes in my mouth, but I'm accountable for what I say and we all are. We trust and assume goodness and intentions. We don't all agree on things, but I fully believe that every member sitting here at this table has the best interest of the city at heart. And we have good intentions. Do we sometimes screw up and make mistakes or do things that don't turn out the way we'd hoped? Absolutely. But I believe, and I assume that we all have good intentions and that we're continuous learners. We're learning how to deal with one another. We're learning how to do this job every minute we're here. Things come up that we could never imagine come up in front of us. And if we just accept this, and this is where each of us is, I think we can really move ahead in a good way. And that's, that's my hope.
Thank you. Marcus?
Just wanted to say thanks to everybody, especially thanks to staff for helping getting the park areas trimmed and looking nice for the special event that took place over the weekend. Councilman Melama, as you said, unfortunately, we can't control the weather. And it wasn't, it wasn't the greatest, but it certainly did show that we put a lot of care and effort into getting things very presentable, so.
Thank you. Okay. This evening, really, I just wanted to go back to the opportunity that we had as a council to spend time together with our city manager and department heads in a retreat that took us out of the fray and allowed us some opportunities set to have some open and honest discussion. I think that it was really healthy and I think that our new guiding behaviors and values is something that we all walked out of the room believing, believing in and believing that we could hold each other accountable to those. And I appreciate it. I know that it was a little awkward for the staff members because I don't think that they've ever had the opportunity to interact with the council like that before, but I'm hoping that it was a good experience for them. And I know it was for, for me, for us, to get to know each other a little bit better. But I appreciated their candor and their open discussion. So I think that it was very, very good. I would like to see us publish those guiding behaviors on, on the bottom of every one of our agendas to keep them out in front of us. And also to, based on what's on our schedule, to also have at the top of each, each of our agendas, one of the guiding behaviors that we can kind of focus on as we go through the discussions that we will have each evening that we're together. I think it keeps us, us focused, you know? And I, T, I walked through all of them and I love every single one of them. But I think this, that for this group, you know, one of the things that I'd ask us to focus on this evening is that we trust and assume goodness and intentions. So, thank you. So at this time on our agenda, Marcus, do you want to speak to the closed session?
Sure. Mayor, members of the city council, at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss pending litigation in the case of William S. Barnett in his capacity as mayor of the city of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn, case number 11-23578-CZ, Michigan Court of Appeals, docket number 312803.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I did, I did talk to Mr. Homier about this. And if you recall, we, I had addressed initially the, the two concerns that came to me about the conflict of interest and it was determined to wait till the night that we were going into the case. So I know that council member Spohman, you did mention about being on the agenda, but we had kind of clarified that it'd be this time. So I did, I'm leaving that up to the council. As I mentioned, I've had a couple, and I think it's the right thing through our charter, I've had a couple address some legitimate questions about if I have a conflict. And that, that's been presented, you know, even by a spouse of, of one of, one of us five, as well as the opposing's council and, and their legitimate concerns. And I kind of threw it out to the council, city council, that is, that I'm going to let that be decided by, by all of you. But I did want to, to address that and, you know, disclosing probably the, the concerns that were brought up initially that I mentioned just a little while ago. One of them probably dealing with I was deposed in that case. And then secondly, I know that there was part of the case revolves around the formal request of removing me from a council member during that time. So I did want to bring that up and I don't know the proper avenue, Mr. Homier, in terms of if I need to leave the room.
Are you asking for recusal?
For the council to determine if I should be recused for a conflict or not. And if you recall, I brought it up probably April or May, but then it was decided to hold off until the issue came up. And so just doing that, I'll look to Mr. Homier in terms of how to proceed with that, if I should leave the room or how.
Well, we've had this issue come up from time to time. I don't believe there's a conflict of interest that prevents you from participating and voting on these issues to the extent that council may make a decision about this case one way or another. Having said that, there's a provision into the charter that allows you to request recusal and that has to be unanimous consent by the remaining members of council.
So do you request that?
Requesting that it be determined by council. Some of you know more in the closed session setting, more of one of the items brought up, but then additionally what I brought up tonight. So I, I want to give that opportunity to council to make the decision before we go in.
I think it's important that we're all at the table. I just really think it's important that we're all at the table. We're doing so many things with parts of us and these are very, very important issues. Do we want to do, do we have to do a roll call?
Do you give me a motion?
So he's asking for recusal?
For council to determine, yes.
I believe if Mr. Stevens is, is excused, I think I need to be too because I gave a deposition too. And I was involved.
And you gave a deposition, so that would be us. Thank you. No, I think we all need to be at this table. And I'm trusting and assuming goodness and intention.
Well, I just, I'm throwing it out there, the, it was brought to our attention and I'm, at least, I don't know if there's no vote, at least the minutes can reflect that for sure.
You requested that, yeah.
In case any of those that brought that, bring that forward, it's been, I've done my part. I've done my due diligence and let you decide.
Thank you. Okay. So then we need to, for motion to go to closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss pending litigation in the case of William Barnett in his capacity as mayor of the city of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn, case number 11-23578-CZ, Michigan Court of Appeals, docket number 312803.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Could we have a motion to get us back into open session?
I make a motion that we return into open session.
Second.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get started, I have something that I would like to say, but I'm going to read because I've written my thoughts down. As you are likely aware, the Michigan Court of Appeals recently remanded the case of mayor of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn back to the circuit court for further proceedings in accordance with its opinion. This case has been pending for three years and covered two elections for the office of mayor. This case has further divided our community and consumed time and resources that frankly could have been used better elsewhere. Things like economic development and job creation, like the recent Terry D annexation and the city's willingness and creativity in support of local business expansion are at the forefront of what we should be doing as a city council to provide meaningful and substantial opportunities for all of the residents of our community. Residents of this city are weary of partisan politics and want to turn the page and move forward. Part of moving forward means putting the past behind us. And I personally believe that dismissing this case will allow us to do just that. We must find a way to work together to serve all of the people of Cadillac and to turn our attention to matters that I believe are profoundly important to the growth and the prosperity of this community. I am not naive and I recognize that some of the wounds caused by this litigation run very deep. But I remain hopeful and positive that as a community, we can overcome differences to do what the people have elected us to do. I support the employees of this city and the city has demonstrated that it will defend and protect their right to be free from political pressures. I respect that. However, in my opinion, the derisive nature of this litigation on the community outweighs any further benefit that may come from the continuation of this case. Thus, I believe that the dismissal of this case serves the best interests of the people of the city of Cadillac and allows us to move forward. I do want to say that that statement is mine and mine alone. That said, I would entertain a motion to authorize and direct the city attorney to seek a stipulation to dismiss the Blackburn litigation with prejudice and without costs as discussed in closed session.
I'll make that motion. Do I need to repeat it?
No.
Do we have a support? Support?
Discussion?
Discussion.
We've had a lot of, we've had a lot of closed sessions on this. That's one of the hard parts when you get a lawsuit like this is a lot of factors come in, a lot of factors that, that weigh on all ends. And the five of us have been doing this for a long time. And this is a, we start going through the process. Sometimes it takes longer than probably people appreciate or understand why, but we're going through a lot of discussion points when we're in there. And you start weighing the pluses and the minuses and where things are at and how things lay out and such. This is not, we as a community cannot go forward where somebody's looking and saying, this person was right and this person was wrong. I don't believe there's a point of saying there's a right or wrong. What we have to do is to look at the full picture and, and see the pluses and the minuses and weigh the whole, the whole picture. It's been done over time, and it's been, I don't think, an enjoyable process for anybody. So there's been a lot of discussion in this, there's been a lot of decision-making, a lot of back and forth. And, and I really hope if, if the community is really talking about healing, it's got to be, and people got to hold each other accountable for that. There needs to be a moving on, there needs to be looking at the full picture. And I'm really, I'm really hoping that as we go forward, that we look at this case and we, we look at every other case, we talked about the employees and supporting them, that we look at every case the same way, with an open mind, and we do it where we're making the decisions as a council, as our job is and our responsibility is.
Anyone else? Just that I, I hope that a time of blaming and finger-pointing and trying to, you know, position, there's, there's the parable of the crab trap. And crabbers know that, that all you need is a box with no top, because the crabs, as they crawl along the seafloor, climb up and fall in. Now, they can climb up the outside and just as easily climb up the inside and get out. And if one crab goes into that crab trap, it stay, it just goes out. But as soon as another one is there, as soon as one starts to crawl up, the other crab pulls it down and tries to crawl up. And one after another, they keep pulling each other down into the crab trap until you have a nice, full crab trap and a delicious crab-like dinner. So I would like us to move a little bit upwards and beyond that mindset of these crabs. It's time we stop pulling each other down, and it's time we all start lifting each other up and get out of this crab trap, for crying out loud. I appreciate very much what you said, Councilmember Stevens. This has been very difficult. And I know that going this way and that and seeing, being cursed with seeing all sides is, has been very difficult. And I'm hoping that we can all get out of this crab trap this evening.
Okay. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shipper's?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Meetings adjourned.